School District Board, whatever you want to call it, to order. And that said, we have our first action item is to approve the seismic rehab. Okay.
Thank you. Teri, do you want to give back? Yeah, that would be great. So up for your consideration tonight is approval of a contract with W R K Structural and Seismic Engineers. In July of 2022, the Mount Angel School District received notification that we were the recipients of nearly $2.5 million in seismic rehabilitation funds. The grant application had been submitted to the Department of Education in December of 2021. M A S D, Mount Angel, established a timeline for requests for proposals in November of 2022. And two proposals were submitted to us for consideration. Both proposals were scored using a rubric that had been incorporated in the R S P application. An R S P committee was formed, made up of the superintendent, the business manager, and the facilities director. Each committee member separately reviewed and scored both proposals. The results were then compared as a committee. After thorough review and scoring, the Request for Proposal Committee recommends to the Board of Directors that the contract for seismic rehabilitation be awarded to W R K Structural and Seismic Engineers. This contract is in the amount of $351,100 and includes phases of pre-design, design development, permitting, and construction administration.
Any other questions or comments? I think, is this speed thing for through the?
Yes.
Someone wants to make a motion as listed on the blue sheet.
I love to approve the contract with W R K Structural and Seismic Engineers.
You have been seconded. Any discussions? Um, favor?
Hi.
unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. And you get to see two members of the committee. Yep. And then moving on to discussion with Brick Architects.
So we'll pass the one. If I might introduce Dan Hess with Brick Architects, he's been instrumental in facilitating the bond oversight.
Oh, gosh, that's a, that's a crew.
It's quite a crew, quite a task. And so he's here tonight to update the board on where that work has been going, where it's headed, and also do an interactive activity with you, C T.
Is this the same activity or someone could be this Thursday?
Yes.
I feel a little bit like substitute teachers. There will be a quiz at the end of this.
Okay.
Okay, so thanks, Rachel. And it's actually been a lot of fun working with the committee. Is it? To kind of go through the process of figuring out what you guys might do for bond in May. So what we're going to do tonight, I wanted to give you guys a little recap of what the committee's done. Some of you actually have been at the committee meeting, so you have a little head start. But bring you up to speed on what we've been doing. And then just talk briefly about what has been identified as the key facility issues that are under consideration by the committee. And then we're going to do the same exercise that the committee did last week, which is there's this amount of projects and there's probably this amount of tax money and grant money you have. So what do you do? And so we worked at table groups and each group came up with kind of their own strategy. And good news is everybody was kind of thinking along the same lines, which is great. But, you know, there were some differences, so it'd be kind of interesting to see where you guys want to. So any questions?
And Dan, you said a couple of us have been at the meetings. There's two of us who have spouses on the committee. Just, just so you know, Tommy Redman and Joe Powell are married. You can talk about them.
They've been great members of the committee. So what we, the sort of the lifespan of the committee or the arc of our activities has been to kind of get an understanding of the background, take a look at the problem. Then we asked everybody to kind of think about, you know, what are your priorities, very big picture, like what kinds of things are important to you? Is it safety and security? Is it keeping kids warm, safe, and dry? Are there educational things? Is there roof leaks? You know, they're all important, but, you know, kind of the first step was just, what's, what's really important was the root field. And then we went from there into, you know, looking at the details and developing these options. The last theoretically, right, the last meeting will be this Thursday, where we'll have the results of the work that the groups did, as well as what you guys do tonight. And then hopefully coalesce on a single proposal that would go to the school board as our recommendation for the 2023 bond. So some of the stuff we did in the, in the beginning was we just had a little bit of a download about the last bond, like what people liked about it, what, how could things have been different, were there any concerns coming out of it? And in general, what we learned is you guys, that was, the last four bonds have been really well supported by the community. But the word that kept coming up was transparency. So as the bond committee works and then as Citizens Committee works to promote the bond, as the school district communicates what the bond is about, bond passes, and then work starts, there's just this transparency all the way through. So people are not wondering, well, wait a minute, why did they do that? Rachel shared the strategic plan, just as kind of a background for everybody to think about, like this is what's important to this school district, this is what's important to your community. And then we talked about the long-range facilities plan, which was a process your district went through, starting a couple of years ago with a facility assessment, which then led to a long-range plan report. And these are reports that every school district in Oregon is required to do. Basically, every 10 years, the state gives you some money to hire consultants to do this. The state gives you a template to use for the facility assessment. So there's consistency across districts. That's been important to the state. And then out of that, you know, you get a laundry list of stuff that you can address. Then the long-range committee takes that and prioritizes it and develops a capital improvement plan for the future. The another key part of a long-range plan is enrollment studies. So it's not just about what's wrong with buildings, but it's also about, are you growing, are you not growing? You can see on the graph, you know, you're kind of plateauing. Actually, population is sort of staying steady, but school enrollment is decreasing a little bit. This is pretty typical in Oregon. It's just birth rates are kind of leveling off. And so every school district pretty much is dealing with this, except the occasional, you know, Happy Valley, you know, some town that's coming crazy and, and is growing, but most towns are kind of leveling off. And then there was this total all the projects, all the things you could do, all your facilities. So the facility assessment is in district schools, it's every single building you own. So this long list here, that's really just three schools, but then all the other buildings are responsible for. So they, there's a spreadsheet analyzes what would it cost to replace buildings just wholesale versus what would cost to repair them? And then based on that, you come up with this facility condition index. Usually you don't vote to replace a school or decide to replace a school unless, you know, sort of the rule of thumb is if the customer repairs about half the cost of the building, then you start replacing it. Out of all this, the group had this prioritization exercise. We asked them what was important to them, and they came up with these guiding principles. Create learning environments that are safe, student-centered, and built to last. Engage community staff and students to create a bond that reflects a unified vision. So that was important, that everybody feels that they can support it. Ensure that scope and budget are aligned to maximize bond opportunities so that what you want to do and what you're looking forward to do line up. And then last, but not least, be responsible stewards of community assets. So be able to look your neighbor in the eye and say, you know, we did this for a good reason. And we're confident that we're spending tax dollars in a wise manner. So then the committee was presented with some financial scenarios that the district has had a financial consultant put together. We call Piper Sandberg, he worked for, he worked for school districts and municipalities around Oregon, helping plan for bonds and what it would cost. So there were, we shared three scenarios. One, the lowest is a $4 million bond. Then a $7 million bond, and then a $14 million bond. So what you're looking at on the graph in the gray, let's just go to say 2025, 2023, and then 2024. What you're seeing is what you're paying on the 2014 bond. And then when it sunsets, so it sunsets in 2031. So that is a constant line on any of these scenarios. So obviously, in the lower scenario, you're increasing your tax bill amount. I think it's for the 4 million, it's like $275 for a $100,000 home, is that about right? These are sort of round numbers.
Right. It, um, yeah, it's about 75 cents. It goes up for the 4 million dollar one for the first eight years.
Yeah. And then?
After that, it goes to just 83 cents for the remaining 12 years.
Right. So you're, you're, again, a $100,000 home, you'd be paying $400 in taxes until you get to 2032, and then you have to drop. And then obviously, you know, you really wanted to go for it. The $14 million bond would, would put you at about $5, $1,500, $400,000 home. And where the group kind of landed was, let's think about a $7 million bond. Because the school district has qualified for a $4 million matching grant from the state. So what you're looking at then is $11 million. And I think everybody thought like, $4 million is certainly doable, but wouldn't get enough stuff done. You know, 14 million is just not really realistic. So that's kind of where, what they're looking at now. I'm not sure, you know, that's where you guys are, that's where the committee is. We talked about priorities and what the community would support. We had four different groups. And, you know, for the most part, people were talking the same things, safety and security, mechanical stuff, boilers that are outdated, energy efficiency. You know, there's some concern about the exteriors of the buildings, like these are, you know, there's some bigger repairs, some roof repairs or replacements in part of buildings that, you know, it's hard to fit that into the normal operating budget of a school district. And, you know, typically you'll deal with these things in the school bar. So the key facility issue, so this, this slide is from the, the long-range report. And this represents the, the projects that you guys agreed on, I think it was like March of 20, 22, March of 22. So you had these three scenarios. And I, I just want to pause here. I wasn't involved in that, but typically when we do long-range planning, we like to make it clear, it's not bond planning. It's taking, you know, the work that you identified needs to be addressed and then making a plan to deal with it. You're not committing, we're going to do it. You know, bond, or you're not committing, we're going to do it in three years. You're just saying, here's the first things we want to tackle when we can, here's the next things, and then here's the most important things. So in your case, you guys sort of prioritize all schools, refresh interior finishes, all schools, update HVAC, safety and security, electrical upgrades at the middle school and the high school. And then at the middle school, roof replacement in a couple of areas. That came to a little over 15 million. The second category was add air conditioning, modify the class facility. And then some sort of exterior things, concessions building at the high school, grandstand, window replacement, you know, visitor bleachers at the gym. And then the final thing was in the additions of Mount Angel Middle School. And then freestanding community building, you know, athletic gym. That was the furthest down. So the, the group has prioritized things a little bit differently than you guys have, not totally, but partly because they agreed on a limit of 11 million. You know, this priority one is 15, so they can't even do all of that. Before we got into the exercise, they wanted to see a little bit more of the types of things we were talking about. This is just a few photos at the high school, for example, some damaged ceilings in a locker room. The next one is a toilet room that used to be a toilet room, but at some point became inoperable for some reason. And is now just used as storage. Shower heads, it's a little hard to see that, but rusty shower heads are operating. This is, I think, is in the girls' locker room. The next one is the called unit ventilators, the heating system in each classroom. Doesn't need a lot of upgrades. And then the last one is this, you know, pump, this sewage pump out at concessions building at the high school, which is currently not working. And so you can't use those two rooms. But I think that picture says it all. At the middle school, you know, some of the same things, but different. The boiler are very old, that's, you know, that's the way they used to make them, but that is time to replace that boiler. Some, Marty pointed out to me, the next slide is, although in general, you know, the middle school looks like it's in great shape on the outside. There are issues with roof drainage, which is causing dry rot or staining. Or you can see just like on the underside of that eve where the water is running away, you can see where the water's been overflowing and staining the brick. So, you know, that seems like something that should be considered. All electrical panels, see that in a lot of places. These entry door systems into each classroom pod, which are fine in their day, but it's all wood frames, some look like glass, not very energy efficient and a little hard to provide security hardware to. And then the last one was a fence that, I know it's fairly new, but Marty pointed out that it seems to be pretty easy for people to open that gate. So that's not a big dollar thing, but should be addressed. And then at St. Mary's Public School, so a big new issue that has come up, that came up over the break was you have two fire sprinkler systems, one of which is called a dry system because it is in the attic. It's not insulated, and you put those kind of systems in where they're prone to freezing. The idea is it's okay to freeze because they don't have water until there's a fire and pump water through it. Well, this one has bits of water that are in it and stay in there. And it froze and broke, was an accident. So Marty's been dealing with that. This is, the next slide is a, a ceiling in a classroom, I forget which classroom, but it apparently has been this way for years. And there's this location of a water leak. And they didn't want to put the tiles, the ceiling tiles back up because they wanted to air it out. But the problem with roof leaks is where it's leaking, where you're seeing it, and where it's leaking often happens in place. Another thing that, or some concern about is the siding, the, it looks like plaster siding. It's, it's the kind of siding that was popular when this building was built, but it's a familiar plaster.
Which is unfortunate in Oregon.
Yeah.
Western Oregon.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of buildings have that. And it tends to crack. It's just a thin layer of plaster over basically styrofoam insulation. And the idea of that was, wow, it's great, you get extra insulation and you have plaster surface. And, you know, I don't know, maybe in California it would be great, but in a wetter climate, it has problems. So that was one thing they considered. And then this is, the next one is just, they have great mechanical mezzanines, which is great. You don't have like roof tub, mechanical units that are suited to the weather and requirements, but still there's, you know, components that are just not working. Pieces and parts that need to be replaced. And then the last slide is the southwest corner of the library in the wood windows, you know, in, in Willamette Valley, southwest, you get the weather from southwest, and those windows are just facing it and they're just doing hammered. And so there's all sorts of dry rot and damage happening. Again, not a huge dollar thing, but still. My screen's supposed, okay. So the thing I always like to pause on and ask the committee to consider is this slide. That as we, you know, dive into the details of all the technical stuff, remember, even when you're thinking about mechanical systems or roof leaks, you're thinking about environment you want for your kids. And it does make a difference. So we're going to do that exercise, but.
That's funny, like building bear.
But I wanted to hand these out to
Yes.
Is it still?
Yeah. Two of our dry alarm systems exploded today.
They always explode when you least want to do. Okay, so this spreadsheet, it's three pages. These are the projects that we, we asked the committee to kind of wrestle with and prioritize. And the projects we're going to ask you guys. Now, there's a whole bunch of stuff, we limited it to just the three schools. Like, out of the slide I showed you, you know, a, a spark, that's one project. Just took that out because, again, the committee seemed to want to prioritize the schools. So just, how you read this is, so for each school, the facility assessment report, just come out, like, start with the high school. It has architectural items, it has plumbing items, it has HVAC items, it has electrical site, and we have category of new construction. If there was something you were going to add. The items in red are things that Marty brought to my attention. They weren't in the facility assessment report. They weren't in the long-range plans, so they're new items. He felt like the committee needed to be aware of. It's not a lot of them, but there's some. If you move across the page, you'll see budget, you'll see these things about inflation and markups. And basically, when you're doing a project, you're, you're planning a bond, you first of all figure out what would it cost to build it today? What would the construction cost be to build it today? And then you say, okay, what else do we have to pay for to actually do a project? You guys just approved a fee for a structural engineer. You also have to use your 2.5 million paper permits and for contract. And there's maybe a few other things, little things you need to spend that money on. So we call that project budgets. And one range, I'm using the figures from the long-range plans, just to be consistent. They marked everything at 38%, they called it development cost. So the construction cost, like, about 38%. That's pretty much industry standard. And then the Department of Ed had 40% inflation on top of that. To get you to the point of construction, like, a year after the bond passes, that's when you need to know, what is it going to cost? And so unfortunately, construction inflation is still a big deal. Its markup, 14%. I heard, but trust the living last year was like 85%. So it's not surprising, construction is doing the same thing. The wizards who have their high side construction cost tell me they think, you know, 8% for another year and 4% after that, because everybody feels. Maybe there's a little bit of recession, not a total recession, but things are going to calm down. But that's a look you might keep to space in your business. And that's what the Oregon Department of Ed seems to be using as well. So the final thing, the great column is the numbers that we really care about. I just lumped everything together, so you're not dealing with, you know, 50 different projects. You're dealing with plumbing, HVAC, architectural, and then I just rounded it up a little bit after, a little bit down, so it's easier to do the math. So for example, a high school, architectural, if you go over to the column that says category subtotals, that adds everything up next to it to 411,912. I just rounded it down a little bit to 411,000. Just makes it a little bit easier to do this exercise. So there's a lot of information here is, what you're going to, what we're going to do is I'm going to give you guys a big piece of paper that says 7 million, and then another 4 million, or 8 million, and others 3 million. And you're going to have these, all the items in green in monopoly money. And if you go to the last, it wasn't, it adds up to like, that's almost 20 million. So you have to get to basically like, you're going to prioritize. And what, here's a little pro tip from the group. They asked like, how do we, you know, how do we know how much, like, is probably more important than HVAC or electrical? You know, how do we decide? And what we told is, discuss one yourselves, but you're allowed to create a different budget. So if you think, okay, it says whatever, 3.2 million for HVAC at a particular school, you could say, well, let's, let's say we're going to spend 2 million there. I'm not sure on what, but we're going to spend 2 million there. And then we're not going to do all the plumbing a year, but we're going to do all the electrical or whatever you think. So that's sort of the game that you guys are going to play is, okay, how do we get from 19 to about 11? So you guys will work, you guys will be this group, you guys will be that group, and I have all this stuff to hand out. In mind, you have about 20 or 25 minutes to do this, and then we'll share between the two groups. In mind, you have about twenty or twenty-five minutes to do this and then we'll share between the two groups.
Okay, and because we have four, we have to do four of them.
Okay, so the color coded by school.
How much is it typically in a bond? Or if you had eleven million or whatever amount, how much is for project management? So how much is?
What some groups did um is they got like, they got all the HVAC together from the schools and then maybe. So a lot of people did it through the middle years, like they put all the HVAC in these cells.
It won't be looking at.
Up to this much, like HVAC or electrical.
Ten percent.
So you could do it that way, like to eleven percent.
Um all for all costs.
Yeah, you you could probably.
There was other groups that did it like a percentage, like they always got a K. Forty percent of the budget to HVAC or issue electrical or safety or whatever.
Yeah, so.
Right, I understand that you have permit, you have all this stuff, you permit, you have all that stuff that you just.
They all have HVAC.
You don't see any room in a building, but you have all this stuff for you, you know? Okay, so that's twelve percent off the top.
And so these here don't conclude.
This is a cost row material, but they do include.
Everything, oh, so like everything that I was reading, I was talking about it.
So we do all, so that includes the twelve percent.
Yeah, that includes inflation and everything.
Okay.
Wow, HVAC at Saint Mary's is.
So the the color coded.
I I think there's so much of the banking.
There's the one outliers thus far.
Nine point two of the all.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, that 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 is our eight. So that's that's a lot.
Okay, let's not worry about that because I'm not supporting the bus bar. Not that it's not important.
Okay, that's why I forgot to listen.
Got it, okay.
There are a lot of interesting strategies that the three different groups took into consideration, one of the things that happened with that list. Of all the things of this list, there's a possibility that we can hold out for eighteen years until we can clear out the bond.
I what could last in eighteen years?
I actually was thinking of that strategy.
I think things like that.
Well, okay, so at all three schools, the HVAC system sounds like what's the youngest? It's yours.
And that's middle school.
Middle school has gotten, they get some more.
It's okay, so that's the Saint Mary's needs a repair, while middle school needs like new system.
I think that it's.
Everything, yeah.
Yeah.
But here it's.
I know, it's only twenty years old, well, twenty-five.
Oh, that's architectural.
In the high school.
Okay, so yeah.
But the high school and middle school are a bunch older and they, theirs is still the version of what the system is.
They need repair and every repair.
Call out your first refrigerator to last, because yours is your last. Wash your drawers. It's like the people there's just going to the same place.
Because the design, so one could use.
That I know.
There's seven of those. Yeah.
That I think that that's a future for.
But new sites.
Like.
Yeah.
We reveal it should be the.
Architectural.
Yeah, but I'm not saying it yet, currently um the eleven people from college schools and seven.
I'm thinking that that would be something, I'm kind of thinking of the technological as well as. You know, what did somebody tell me recently at a meeting that at the high school, they still have. I think that's very dated.
I think man's teaching it finishes, he was.
Yes, too.
So that one has to go, that one has to go.
I went back to the kind of such thing and had to flip over the. Because because. But that was the way it was instead of.
No, I haven't.
Yeah. So.
And and they keep losing.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
We have two point two by one in your place, college.
Two point five million.
Two point two five. Place all electrical.
I'm curious about the um.
Let me see.
The toilet room upgrades, is that, would that, would that make?
Six fifteen, middle school seven hundred.
It's a nine hundred.
More at the high school. Yeah, um so I mean, the girls.
But it is, it's.
Yeah, because it.
I think that's what Allos storage.
Yeah, no, that one I don't know.
That's we don't have anybody say there was a loud side.
All right, it's worth seeing.
Yes, I mean, that other backflip it all because there is.
Rest of bills.
To me, maybe it's.
Let's replace all the other cables.
The one by file here, but you don't want to get it. Move one down, the other side hallway across from standing.
And it's, I mean, it's twenty-two thousand, so it's not as.
So. Yeah, that was the downstairs, you know, the toilet room upgrades at the high school, if that's, would that be a student use, use, use? I mean, I think that was really, are you afraid of this because you were writing. Do you know where that storage is?
Well, you're looking at your LED.
Is it downstairs?
Right? So.
No, it's on the main hall. I think it's near the library as a whole.
Oh.
That's even or they.
You're coming out with thousands.
Of that two point two.
Yeah, maybe right by the dumpster.
It's sort of just updated.
Oh, yeah, probably one of those.
I bet you're.
Yeah, no, but I think we don't have.
You're right.
Your library.
It can't be.
You're right.
I think, I mean, I, I think you're right.
More.
About how tall.
More.
It says the. That boy like the showers.
Oh.
So now you're looking at roughly four point three five.
Like, yeah, lens, it's like that's a big deal.
But right now the.
That's what it says.
Includes those LED lights, right?
But.
It's opportunity is.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So one of the strategies already, yeah, already some of the groups did. Last Thursday night was, they said, all right, we'll take. So I like that, we're only gonna allocate sixty percent, we're only gonna allocate forty percent, knowing that some things like LED might come.
This is a um, this is a lot of. I think he said. Yeah.
This is a little challenging for you guys because you don't know the details of.
I think the total includes some of these.
Forty percent.
Like like in middle school.
So you could do sixty percent.
That is.
Okay, so we're, so that would be.
I'm not finding.
If it's sixty percent.
Seven plus a hundred and seventeen is probably about that.
Yeah.
This one.
So yeah. So we see a theme.
Which?
Wanting the bare basics. So how much ready is?
So that would be. Are you plumbing up would be taken from it in this first category or? What would you do, right, the dollars?
Yeah.
There is, there are no bramos, right?
There's a.
You know, but like, I tell you, like, if you say like, if you add it up.
We're just writing house dollars across to get um water. Softeners in all the buildings.
Could you know what?
Sixty percent.
Can you just write it on the sheet?
We could just write.
You said.
Yeah.
I would write that every month, every month, that's how that has.
My mental waters.
So that's a lot. I mean, you can feel it, someone is a shower and.
Should I just write how much?
Okay. Sixty percent.
One million, so that's a little dollar, we put one point three five million.
Yeah.
And when I dump it out, it's like.
It's like so gross.
So I can imagine that.
Saint Mary's.
Techno type, so I don't.
And.
A water softener, you have a man at least like a seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, I don't know what it was, they just, they just did something along like that.
I agree.
Sort of the pipes.
It's already. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Is there one in the window? You got a house around water.
I have no idea.
It's just like maybe.
Tommy would know, I don't know, Tommy knows.
That. There's a policy at Saint Mary's.
And that was probably luxury though.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Marty didn't know where that was.
Oh, there are, so, yeah, I like that.
So can't you catch it in in quarter view?
Okay, so let's see.
Oh, thank you.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so the middle state.
This is all good to see.
Yeah, Saint Mary's get a patch. I know it's twenty-two years old.
Okay, Joey, you're.
Okay, well, whatever.
So.
I'm just kidding.
I've had Saint Mary's.
Yeah, two year, forty year.
Is it, I think it's a thirty, but the problem is that the company that guaranteed.
Is there anything that?
Of course they did.
That's why they want this maybe.
Of course they did.
I would say like Saint Mary's interior finishes, wall ceilings.
Because uh.
It's.
You know.
No.
Shortly after. Shortly after water dripping down the middle.
Right there, right?
And it was shortly after they.
Okay, so.
It was only thirty, but.
Relative to the other two.
The middle school.
Middle school roof.
Yes, a middle school roof and drainage improvement to do seventy.
A most.
I would think the windows, because those are just getting pushed, the library and the.
Yeah.
Buildings every year.
Yeah, they're draining.
I I listen, I get.
The management of systems, so.
Just trying to figure out.
Get pushed, and is that why it's failing or is there like a leak in the valve? A valve pressure error?
Not sure.
Could you?
Well, I agree, and I don't like what I'm, but I'm just saying. So the middle, how much is the little school roof?
So it's, it says five hundred thousand for the group.
Yeah.
Well, this has.
Architectural, it says roof repairs.
Good point.
This is.
We have those.
Those are still.
This is just relatively.
Here's.
This is the last one.
Replace wood windows.
Yeah.
Yeah, what else is in line?
Like senior hall.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Senior hall drainage, the like.
Drainage.
Yeah.
Kitchen door.
Drainage. Interior finished.
It is not drainage and this.
We had to work in there over the summer, this is replace the weather.
And it was.
It was, it was awful.
Yeah.
We've done plumbing here into.
We've really got.
Trying to um get this library sound.
There's one. Interior finishes, interior finishes.
Four three walls. Okay, so did you have some? Quarter fat or package?
Yeah, all the HVAC.
Does the HVAC include like uh?
I don't know what the reason is.
The porters.
Like, is it that the middle school, the.
Yeah. Then I like the.
What's going to do upgrades?
So.
Yeah.
Stilling door.
Extra. Chair in the last couple of years, but.
What they said um at our last meeting was that you could still, it was like, for example, Saint Mary's.
Okay, so then.
You're talking about beauty.
Right, a two and a half million and still get a lot of good stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I'm I'm I was.
Next year.
Oh, sorry.
Barely making a ton.
Right, well, you could see our slides after all that, all our technical difficulties.
Yeah, you're describing all the pictures, I'm like. I can hear him, buddy, and I can I can see the reflection in the window.
And a whole lot of scene when you have a ceiling.
I got chill.
She's. I still can't picture now.
I'm really. Yeah, I see, uh, probably know that.
The door.
I'll be like.
But I didn't say that.
This is just like, you know, the electrical panels can be. Kind of a secret.
So, okay, so you got the doors and how much?
I think electric.
The roof and drainage improvement.
Is that, is that true?
It is.
A hundred and seventy thousand.
Are those panels so?
I know, a million, how much is it?
No, one hundred and fifty. I mean, that's it.
It's Saint Mary's.
That's what it says on there.
I guess it's.
And then we stamp.
Ninety, yeah, we built like thirty-seven, so. Oh, yeah.
Then order to build the valve, it'll be like that, you do that. So.
I bet.
Twenty-five, yeah.
I guess.
Okay.
So you've got three hundred and thirty thousand right there.
It was maybe something.
Okay, I think that's a good.
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
And then we wait.
Yeah, 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 I wish, yeah.
I mean, they're self-holds, they're gonna be around.
It'd be nice to.
But I think we need both JFK and man.
I I almost.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, we're funding, we're just right funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
There are new rules to that.
And we're.
But I can say for the door.
Plus funding the doors.
How much is it, the whole amount?
Hundred and sixty thousand, but like.
I mean, at Saint Mary's, the new coming.
Well, I said, we did the, we get the ceiling's all speed enough and they want new stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have.
Well, just explaining why, what it is, why it's figuring out the place.
Yeah, so I see, I see, and the problem also.
Oh, yeah. I'm not trying to compromise.
Probably might.
Oh.
If we could do a simple.
It could be also huh?
Cosmetic, that is.
There could be the A word.
Like replace.
Yeah.
But I think you have to eliminate it.
See, that's what I was kind of making.
Dry rub.
Yeah, you know.
That's.
I I think.
Basically putting down.
I think we just go for a couple.
Yeah, you're you're right, you have describing that.
Yeah.
School, which is.
Clean it up.
Yeah, it's an over the century.
Yeah, it is pretty.
Clean it up.
It's been eight years.
It's a spider mountain.
Yeah.
Twenty.
It's not really.
I think it's well.
Right.
Yeah, this is four and eighty.
Okay, what else at middle school, the, what is electric?
What's going on with the plumbing at school? It doesn't, I don't, other than HVAC, you know, some.
So.
Okay. I think those are just like upgrade type things.
Yeah. Okay.
The electrical.
I'll make a picture of the place.
Like deeper sandtrays, how you use the electrical panel.
That's very much.
That's interesting that he had.
Yeah, was it electrical?
Yeah, so um I actually talked to that.
Sixty, sixty nine?
The asset.
Sixty or sixty nine?
Is. The.
I think it's most expensive.
Well, well, you went through them.
Yeah, I went through the three sixes, I was at certain, my class was the first class at every store.
As well.
You know, completely.
Also.
Yeah, because the reason is to shut down, right, and then you open back up within your.
One year, yeah.
Okay, let's just, let's just leave this right now.
So this is.
They're just all these leaks everywhere, these paint holes. And um. It's just sort of.
And you don't want, you don't want peaks.
No, and it's.
It's not one place.
And stuff, so.
Okay.
And some of the.
So that's good.
Yeah.
It's just.
You wanna go to Saint Mary's, it's just a high school site, I mean.
Something at Saint Mary's might need my thing.
This little line right here, just looking at this line is a million, twelve million.
Okay.
One of those, not not including outliers. From there, there's twelve, almost twelve million at Saint Mary's.
Parking lots, it depends on what it says, since roadways.
But again.
That probably all.
It depends.
Yeah. Yeah.
You could lower, not just.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's pretty.
Yeah, I think.
I think so too.
It's a little dark out there, but.
It's not that.
The real trouble with, I'm sorry.
But no, no, go ahead. The drainage though needs.
That's.
Oh, it's a little ways up there.
Well, another layer of.
That outside. And there's that.
Oh, yeah.
That was all the year, wasn't it?
Drainage.
It was, just so that's not really just.
Yeah, that that's gonna.
It came up in the last meeting.
Okay.
We need to do.
We need to write it down.
There's like lots of stuff.
It's a lot of stuff, it wasn't.
Is that part of.
I know that wasn't.
Saint Mary's needs the.
But Rachel brought it up.
There's just no reason.
We need that.
Place.
Yeah.
Instead of.
Say we're.
Place southwest corner windows.
Yes.
School.
Yes.
The middle school.
What else?
It's not perfect.
Yeah, but what.
Cause you told me no over exterior.
Yeah, that was a big um conversation.
I'm a B. For the process.
Oh, yeah.
You've already got end doors.
Holding solution.
That was a hallway, you've got another glass wall with.
And so one solution was to just.
Wouldn't be, I wouldn't think it would be.
Yeah, I was thinking that too when I was in there today, because you really can box that off.
Yeah.
The whole interior is gonna be boxed off.
That's just a. Yes.
Or that.
But that, that would be a sealant to just try and protect what is there.
I've always wondered about that.
Okay, so what else at Saint Mary's?
We're gonna figure out what.
We've already got a window at the, at the office.
We can do the mams.
I just. They've already got.
Okay.
Lot of.
Yeah, let's look at all of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. All the pieces are there.
Yeah. Cause accentuating the safety, especially at grade school, that's a, that would be a change.
And then even contain in that area. Or at least prevent them.
It would have been.
HVAC.
And, you know, with that.
This is more important.
Yeah.
So you guys look like there's.
Yeah. Yeah, I like it. Tommy said he doesn't think they did a water softener, but he thinks it's a good idea.
Need to sign which, which is, that's, that's good.
I I.
It didn't take us long, I mean, we went through dishwasher, our house with that.
I thought like this estimated it was.
It's so great, you're just.
Yeah.
Out, so I'm like, oh, we gotta add a water softener, which we didn't.
Really?
That was, we didn't have it until first week. We had.
That's.
I never really.
They are fast.
Well, we're not, we're slow.
We're not nitpicking it. We're, we're kind of big picturing it. Yeah.
We have about ten minutes, if you guys want to. Show us.
Yeah.
What's that?
Doesn't.
It's five.
Give us a few.
Goes away.
So we would do, so let's just kind of make sure that we have.
Or by.
And are we good with front door lines that we don't have here?
Okay.
Should be able to get awkward vision, or like.
The site was, we were the ones that most know that stuff.
Part two. Well, was. I think.
Came out, but.
That lighting improvements from.
I think you are right. I was actually kind of thinking if, if we just give a percentage, they may con, they may figure out.
So how much is a whole drain station?
Or some of it. Right now, what they do is they actually have a computer system that.
Yeah.
Hard. Real.
Does HVAC in buildings, everyone's central person controls the HVAC at all the buildings.
Yeah.
Now, that's.
And.
The job.
And that's like.
Yeah.
Reading, repeating, they get everything on every room, you know.
Not in the area.
And we have one fire screen for people and. They're telling you that.
Yeah.
S Ls.
So.
Yeah.
Well, once it gets to.
Well, true, but I, those come from.
Sixty percent, you really, what do you hold on?
I'd say sixty percent is fine, and I think what it is, is they have to cut it.
Yeah.
Jockeying with it, cause if you're just gonna patch it up, I'm not in favor of everybody getting in use HVAC system without looking at it.
And if it's done in conjunction, it's a.
I. Back.
That's what I think, I think if you did this part of the.
Um, I know that sounds.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're all right.
You're fine.
High school? I think, I think it would.
So what was your, what would you wanna do for?
I think it would.
No more.
So we're doing.
Yeah.
And then the.
I mean.
The thing with the man is the plumbing and then. The concession stand can't, has to leave us, because I'm just gonna say.
At my school.
Yeah, the concession stand.
I mean, it makes sense to me.
We can, unless you think that's gonna have parents vote for us.
I'm, I'm really curious. I know, but I'm really curious about more career funding, so it's not.
How much is.
And so much initially.
I don't need a lot of support.
And that's because we've got new residential construction.
I am.
I think that's.
And that's.
Because you're sitting there, we're doing offices outside the bathrooms for all those people.
Four to eight years?
Yeah.
Well, and then the bathroom says, okay, so, so what?
So we drink plants at stadium concessions under that.
Do you know, I, you know, um. Okay.
Because.
That they.
They shut us down, they shut us down.
I'm just.
You're doing.
And I was a jury.
At the.
She told me they want our daughter, they want her to show us before, it must be more, it's interesting. Uh, I did on their.
That's part of site.
Okay.
Some of the signs like, it's not, yeah, that's it, pushing the apple house.
Yes, it's like. But they have. Part one, I don't think they.
Like not, they just have. They're not, they're just the first eight years.
Yeah, like defer, defer some of it. I'm not, and I'm like, I know already, but suddenly happens at JFK, it's like.
And the other thing is.
Well, we, so I've been that.
Every year, I, so I'm just kind of saying, just, um, this tax number.
And so as the.
Maybe one A T, but it's almost, it's.
The cost of how it has to go down.
Right.
And so.
But if.
We could wait a long.
And if we can be, tell the story so that we are planning on financing.
Okay. That would be.
And then you'll replace the windows.
Additions aren't as high.
Finishing.
Yeah.
And we're deferring the, we're deferring the steep increase for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Because we're not.
I'm just.
So then search.
There's a.
Our whole kids.
That's a hundred and forty one.
That.
Five.
Well, that's for replacing, replace remaining.
Full.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, actually.
And that's for the next eight years, so that's what I.
And we should. I don't know, I defer to the financial.
Yeah, I know that.
And they, they showed us a few examples of how.
And six, and I'm not even calling it great, but.
But it is.
Where's that?
Looking at it and, and.
Well, the ones that live in, you know, the science rooms are, you know.
The bathroom doesn't.
Yeah, two so those.
You're over.
And one down by.
This does cost you.
Okay.
I'm using it for storage because not.
I personally think.
Oh, it doesn't.
Cause when, I mean, when we go out.
Point.
As if we're never gonna have more.
Yeah, all of, it was just one.
But we.
Right, right.
Like the.
Well, maybe it's for.
Facts.
Yeah.
The language and the bond.
Yeah.
And it was asking this.
Right.
Four, or twenty, twenty.
Hundred thousand.
We.
So.
We do, yes, all, all, all schools.
If it's.
Yeah.
We leave it in.
Yeah.
All, all toilets will be down in the award, it's be running in schools. But it's just.
Some money?
Yeah, money.
Dan, how's, how's it going?
Very good.
Very good.
Very good.
I think we have.
To like eighty six.
Seven.
Yeah.
About eighty six thousand.
Well, this is.
For what?
The eight.
For all the plumbers.
Plumbing fix to replace present eight.
Or toilet.
Oh, sorry.
So the group upgrades is.
So let's just do the HVAC and then.
Yeah. Let's talk about all the.
Sorry, you guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I did the toilet.
Lay them out the way you want, because I'm gonna take.
Right. So whatever adds up.
Any interest of time, Dan is asking if we can wrap it up, so what?
What do you wanna finish on?
We probably don't have time to.
I think we want this. And then.
Of plumbing.
Which we're pretty.
Eighty six four.
Well, I'm thinking plumbing in general. As long as.
And then that.
Nineteen thirty. One point two million.
And what if we decide this is. This might be Saint Mary's, it's ninety. We just have the best.
That was our.
Cause the roof is.
So.
If you, if we'd make this eight and then we make this plumbing.
Yeah.
That's what comes to with all of that.
Yeah. One point two million. But too many, one point two.
One point two.
Put the plumbing down at one point two.
Do we, do we wanna call this one half a million?
Well, that's what was in the pool, that was in the pool.
Okay.
Yeah, it's.
I think it, I think one seventy.
It's not.
Yeah.
They have water softeners.
So how about if you guys.
But it's.
Water over their table. And.
Huh?
Here with thirty one.
Yeah.
So do you have any?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's like.
I still toy with upgrades that she said.
Yeah, I'll say.
I have a water softener, but. I put two thirty five.
It's two.
We're in twisters.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
Great. That's all under our protection.
You are.
So this is exactly four million and it's.
I got nine one six.
They also say windows, right?
So we can just adjust.
One forty two.
To lower them down.
It's one point six two.
Alright, okay. They're ready, guys.
My.
So what, you guys.
This is a four million. But so we're running out of this like.
That's it.
Okay, so one.
So what do you guys come up with?
This is working on. Three. Lighting.
No, we don't.
Everyone, what are you working on?
No.
Okay, how, what did you guys come up with?
Uh, we said sixty percent funding of the electrical. Uh, a lot had to do, and we took out all the L E D upgrades because you can fund that later type, as well as, there's a lot of grant money out there to update yours.
Grant.
Um, so we can get part of that funded, um, and that could wait till the next bond too, but we can't get funded. Um, middle school roof, drainage, windows, doors, five hundred thousand. And it wasn't the full, um, wasn't the full amount?
I think it was.
Okay. Okay. Um, HVAC sixty percent funded, five point five million, um, JFK site, hundred eighteen thousand. Um, that was due to, that was a sewer, right? Yeah, that, that was just this, addressing the sewer issue out of the concessions, um, and nothing else. Plumbing, uh, we funded all the plumbing at one point two million. We think kids need to have, you know, working tools. Um, so we funded all of that, two hundred thirty thousand, and then finishing the extra year where those hundred, hundred forty thousand. We're gonna get to the.
We didn't get to.
We didn't finish our.
So yes.
We're going to it.
Yeah.
And you guys did.
Yeah.
But we think like, the interior finishes, you know, definitely would be over here. And we're posting the windows.
How do you guys feel about seven, four million dollar bonds this year? You like it?
I think we have to go for the seven million.
Right, because your, your HVAC systems alone. Or basically you're gonna take up, if you go for four million, all you're gonna do is upgrade HVAC systems.
So what you guys, let's, what did you just come up with?
We did it a little differently. We, we weren't the.
Nice. Nice.
We just left the bucks.
We left the bucks, we, we put in all that HVAC.
Minus about a half million for each, cause.
We're, we're over budget.
We're over budget.
And then we put everything else that we wanted, and these are all of the lower ticket items into the other.
We're over a million, so we didn't do the.
We didn't.
The nagging.
We didn't percentage it down, we get it to.
And then that's what was off.
We pull everything, all that's off.
So you put the JFK site.
Yes, cause the site or the JFK site. Um, we, that includes windows, correct? No.
No.
No, exterior windows. There's, is a different one.
Architectural, I think, is for the JFK windows.
Site is, that'd be not repairs, site.
Yeah.
Sight lighting. Sewer repairs at stadium concessions.
I think the only thing that we, I, I would, I was just, my team was the, the stadium concessions.
The, the.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's.
I think that was our.
Yeah, there's, there's.
So whatever that was.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you're right, that's what we're thinking. So that is.
So I think we're, I, I was just linking up, well, I think we're kind of along the same pathways as to what to repair and.
Taylor, Taylor had to go, her grandpa's having a medical emergency, so she had to go, but she, we talked about the toilets at the high school. If we can.
Toilet should work.
If we, well.
Yeah.
If we can expand capacity for working high classrooms, the student experience is so much better. I mean, just think of your experiences.
Well, and just, I mean, this, the two that they use are fine. I mean, the one, I mean, one by the concession stand, and I don't know what the guy just likes, I'm in there, but. But it's the ones that are in different other spots that don't even, they don't even use.
That's because they're not usable.
Yeah. Well, the one down by the science room, I know that there was a science teacher that had the key to it, and he would use it, but they weren't letting the kids use it.
Just think about the time wasted.
Yeah.
Travel.
How far they have to go to use.
How many distractions have you come along the way?
Yeah.
And expanding back to capacity is next year's experience.
Yeah.
And making sure that you might go to school right now, there's some back.
I deserve. So very similar, we're pretty quick to not consider the five million dollars.
Well, I mean, that, uh, you know, in terms of the big picture things, you guys are pretty much on the same page with the amount of the bond. Not doing the community facility, and that is just a matter of how you can force through. Scope of the word.
Yeah. And we were even talking about an addition to consider, it's not on the list, is, um, what did you say?
Oh, the security to the entrance.
Yes.
And out.
Saint Mary's.
Yes.
At Saint Mary's.
That's not even included, is it?
That's not on the name, but we'd like it out of it.
We. Yes, ten percent support that.
Yeah.
That came up at the last meeting, so that for our next meeting.
Because the middle school's, okay, I mean, there's.
They just need some of those doors to make it so the kids can't reach their arm through, open up, you know.
Yeah. And the high school, I think they did a very good job there.
Did you think that? Screen. You've got.
I'm related to that.
And we were very interested in how much more expensive the plumbing is at Saint Mary's compared to everything else, that's because apparently it's just.
Apparently, there's, um, million one leaks around the middle school, and so.
That's awful. So that needs, I mean, whenever you, water getting in, you have to.
Yeah. That's, yeah, the damage is gonna cause an issue.
Alright, nice work to you guys.
Yeah.
So.
Good, good, good.
You know, you guys have had a good lunch of this now, so when the committee makes a recognition, we'll know what you're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we did also talk about dollar softener systems that offer schools to soften.
Well, patient and softeners.
Well, some, I know, probably would have to be a heavy duty system, but it can protect the.
I get what you're saying, yeah.
The plumbing.
From the hard line.
We all do it in our homes because the part is so often.
So do you guys have any questions or do you need more information from us?
It's just gonna be in the established details, we, once we decide what projects to do and.
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
And, and then we'll need to be well educated on the language and the bond to make sure that we're specific enough. But not.
Not too.
Not too limiting, but not too.
Not too.
Yeah, 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 that, that sweet spot, so it'll be interesting. It'll be fun exercise. Assuming. Well, Dan was, uh, walking you through the updates from the committee and the activity. Christie and I have more technical information we wanted to be able to share with you tonight for maybe the next ten to fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Can you let me back in?
Well, I think this is like a little funny.
Dan, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Dan, where do you travel from?
Uh, Portland, our office.
It's not too bad this time of day.
It's not bad, though. I mean, we do work all over the state. We're doing a lot of rich planning, southern, northern coast, so.
Yeah, the south coast is a trek.
There's no easy way to get to peace.
So I will send these to you because, um, I know that you guys think a lot like, like me, because you live here, um, like what is this gonna end up costing us? And so I put, um, dollar amounts on the slides that, um, Dan had shared on his, so you can kind of see, and then I also made a spreadsheet, um, that you guys can see that really compares. Um, each dollar amount with what we're currently paying, and it also has like a little margin layer in there, so you can put in whatever your tax assessment value is. So I'll just go through this really quick, and like, and I'll send it to you. Um, so this first graph, um, like he was saying, this is what we currently are at right now. So you can see where it's been over the years, um, and they're projecting over the next eight years, it's gonna be about two dollars and eighty five cents per thousand, or two hundred eighty five dollars per hundred thousand is more how I think about it. Um, and then when you go to the four million, say in a twenty year, uh, bond, the light blue is what it goes up to, so it goes from, um, the, what was it, two. Two eighty five to, um, yeah.
Nine point two five.
And so that for the eight years, and then it makes that big drop then to eighty three cents, uh, for the remaining, um, twelve years. And then same idea for the seven million dollars, it goes up to four oh five per, um, thousand or eight years, and then it drops considerably to the one forty eight, um, per thousand.
This is.
So what, what is that, two thousand thirty three? Two thousand thirty two.
Thirty two.
Thirty two.
Yeah.
Drops.
Yeah. Um, you know, the idea is having that big drop is really wouldn't, would start thinking about potentially getting that next bond to go on top of that amount. Um.
Yeah.
And then, go ahead.
Just curious, um, I know we have it in our, in our board materials from when this Sam and Piper presented that, where. Where five dollars is statewide for school districts, that's like.
Oh, yeah.
That will be like the, that will be the most expensive.
Even if you go for the seven million, we're gonna be the most expensive.
Yeah, you know, and unfortunately, it's our tax base, like, I was telling, um, Rachel Silverton's going out for a bond, and I think right now they're like in a hundred and thirty five million dollar bond, and it's like not even anywhere close to what, what our bond's going to be in terms of cost, just because their tax base is so different.
Take her, yeah.
Um, and there, um, and then the fourteen million dollar, we already kind of X, got rid of that, so, um, that's in here, so I'll get this sent out to you guys, just so you can see the different, um, options. Um, I did reach out to Lauren from Piper Sandler to ask a question, if there is a way to defer more of this into the future, to make the upfront, you know, even a few years or eight years, or, you know, is there a way to finance it differently to make it less expensive? I haven't heard back from her yet, so. Soon as I hear back from her, I'll share, um, that information with you guys as well. Um, and so this is that spreadsheet, um, that I made, and so the top part here is just, um, what the cost of the bond is, and I did it per hundred thousand, the tax assessed value of one seventy five, which is. Kind of like a sweet spot of the, the housing of, you know, the houses that have been here for a while, um, and then the three hundred thousand for taxes, that's gonna be more of the new construction, um, or a little bit higher than that, so the. The folks that have been here for a long time, they haven't done major, you know, upgrades, their tax assessed value is quite a bit lower than all of us, um, yeah, that have the, the newer houses, because.
Yeah, Mark, you're in good shape.
Cause they're limited to that three percent every year, so, um, you then kind of see, in, you know, the difference. So, um, you then kind of see in, you know, the difference per, between, so like if you look at the current bond.
And what, what does interest rate for the bond do to this, cause I'm curious about the finance of the bond.
So the interest rate, so this is, uh, she redid this for us in just, at the end of December, so with current rates, so they, this, this cost did go up. Um, so, uh, these are current rates for the interest, um, and that is one downside, if, if, um, I remember when she was talking to us about deferring. One of the problems with deferring is that it makes the bond less attractive, and so the rates could potentially higher, but like overall. But again, if it solves a problem of helping people out for a few years, could be worth it, so we'll see. Um. And, uh, so yeah, so I broke it down for eight years and then twelve years, what the cost would be, so. You know, currently on a three hundred thousand dollar tax assessed value, um, it's eight hundred and fifty five dollars a year that someone's paying. If we go to a seven million dollar bond, um, it would go up to about twelve hundred and fifteen dollars a year. Um, for the first eight years, and then obviously it goes down quite a bit. And so this next portion here shows what it is, um, per month and per day. So again, if we're looking at the seven million dollar bond, which kind of seems to be the sweet spot, um, you know. For three hundred thousand dollar tax assessed value, it's gonna be about three hundred and sixty dollars a year, um, but it's only thirty dollars a month. I mean, it's, it's a lot of money, but if you put it down, you know, as a month or even a day, you know, three dollars a month, that's much more manageable. Thinking than, you know, saying that someone's gonna go up. Um, a certain amount by per thousand or per hundred thousand. Um, and again, this is just, um, a one year time, you know, as you know, the values of homes are getting to you, in theory, to go up. So this is just one year, and so then the next year, the difference is going to be more because the value of your house is more, more. Um, so anyways, that's the difference between all those different scenarios, and then down here is, um, your tax assessed value, so you can type in whatever your tax assessed value is, and it will show you what you currently are paying. What it would be at four million, seven million, fourteen million, and then breaks it down by month and day. Um. So, um, I, I'm not gonna be sharing this with the whole community, but for you guys as talking points, um, and then I shared it with bond committee too, just to have, you know, for this in the perspective. I think it's helpful, so you really know what you're spending. Is there any questions on this at all? No?
Okay, you know, and I'll, I'll say it out loud again, I am curious if there is a way to defer or. Somehow have the impact be less for the initial couple of years because we have new development happening in our community. And so that could really help absorb the load of this bond. So I'm just very curious about the potential there, it's, it can be a gamble and a risk, I know. Anyway.
All right, so I'm going to close out the evening with a couple of slides for you, uh, one of the things that Sherry had mentioned. Was, um, you know, what's happening as far as a ballot title, an explanatory statement. Those are some things that are happening behind the scenes right now that you might not necessarily have been made aware of. So, uh, first some, a reminder of some important dates that are coming up. February second is our final bond oversight committee meeting, and as I had shared with you last Friday, I highly encourage you to either participate. Uh, observe, uh, virtually or in person for that, Saint Mary's, we start at five thirty this Thursday. And then February twenty third is the final day for the governing body to pass a resolution calling for an election. Establishing the not to exceed the amount, the maximum maturity, and approving the form of the ballot title. And that would be taken care of as far as a recommendation being brought to you at February thirteen for the. And then February twenty fourth is the deadline for providing a draft ballot title and explanatory statement to Marion County. March, March sixteenth is the provision of the final ballot, uh, title and explanatory statement. So the things that are happening behind the scenes right now that haven't, that have been involved in and we haven't provided much update for you are the role of the bond council. Uh, we're using, uh, the law firm of Hawkins, Delafield and Wood. And what they're working on is preparing the board resolution for you that will go before the board on the thirteenth. They are working on editing the ballot title and the explanatory statement to prepare for submission to the county. They also will be, as soon as we finish up our work with the oversight committee, reviewing, uh, the summary of proposed projects, because their, their job is to check for validity and compliance with Oregon law. And, uh, the nice part about bond council is it is contingent, meaning the work that is being provided at this time is at no cost. And remains at no cost to us until a bond. So those things are happening also right now. Questions? That's what happened this evening.
Wonderful.
So any further discussion or, Dan, do you have anything to add?
No, but nice work to you guys.
Let's go ahead and, um, adjourn.